Good morning, everyone. This is November sixth, two thousand twenty-five Knox County Commissioners. We have Clint Cochran from the Engineers Office, Rob Vendetti from our Soil and Water Department. And we're going to be talking about the North Branch of Ford Creek. Everyone's familiar with that in the county. Down around Centerburg area, and it's one of the responsibilities of the County Commissioners to inspect ditches and talk about ditches every now and then. So you guys are our ditch patrol today. And I want you to share with us some of the things we need to do.
Yeah, so one of the things that we're running into in terms of maintenance on the county dishes, and this is true of all of our, almost all of our projects right now, not just North Branch of Ford Creek. But there are statutory limits in place on how much the maintenance fund for each of those projects can accumulate. And just because of increases in, you know, inflationary increases in cost of materials, labor, equipment operation, even things like mowing and spraying on these ditches, we're finding that the caps that we have for maintenance on those are not adequate at this point. So what we really would propose the County Commissioners do, and you can do this on the six year anniversary for each one of the projects. Two thousand twenty-five happens to be the six year anniversary for the North Branch of Ford Creek. You can revisit the construction costs for those projects. The County Engineer, County Engineers Office can make a recommendation to you to raise the maintenance cap based on what the current construction cost of the project would be. And I believe Clint has information to share with you today on that.
So the engineer's estimate can only be updated based on the original estimate on the project. So back in nineteen seventy-seven when this was constructed, there's only three items they used to construct it. Excavation, clearing, and seed fertilizer. So we can only update based on those three items. Now, if we were to rebid this, and today we would have fifty items on it, you know, they break out estimates a lot more. So based on those numbers and based on, we use Augles County because their county has a lot of maintenance ditches. And they also, we took ODOT's numbers for these items specifically to assess what it would cost to build the, rebuild the ditch. And so two hundred eighty-five thousand. I have the estimate, if you guys want a copy of it. It's what it would cost to rebuild this ditch, and then you're allowed to put the new cap at twenty percent of that. So that's the max this fund can have in it. So that's where that estimate, that's where all the numbers came from, and the estimate was from other counties. And so we have numbers to back up where that estimate.
You have four, about forty thousand dollars.
It's fifty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars is what the new cap can be based on that. So for example, maintenance, it costs three thousand dollars from DeAngelo Brothers to spray it. So the old cap was only.
It's over forty-six eighty.
Forty-six eighty, so just even spray it, we would spend all the money in one year. We have to mow it. We have an estimate to do some ditching, that's twenty, twenty-five thousand. So we don't even have money in there to maintenance the ditch currently.
And I would say in the last two years, for sure, we've done nothing. That we, we haven't sprayed it, we haven't mowed it because there's not enough money in the fund. There's, we're at, we were at the cap, so there's not enough money to do anything in there, but we weren't able to put more in there because it would go over the cap. And that's kind of where we've been stuck in this cycle for the last couple of years.
So in with that being said, we didn't collect any money from anybody because we're already at the cap.
We did this year on that one. We brought in twenty-four hundred because we started the year with twenty-four hundred. So I think, was there, I can't remember, there was something minor we did.
Yeah, we had, we did have some mowing last year on Ford Creek.
We did pay for mowing. That's all we can afford. We couldn't afford the spraying, but we could afford a little bit of mowing. And I think the mowing, the only reason we could afford to do it is the County Engineer agreed to actually go out and mow it for us.
So we're mowing, our guys, and costs, you know, it's not hiring somebody private. So we just literally look at what it costs a mower per hour and what it costs for a guy, and that, that's what we were billing.
And then I think the other thing, when the engineer sent us the bill, said we don't have enough money in that fund to pay that, so we only, he just basically told what we keep giving it in the fund at that point.
So the ditch is in need of repair or replacement?
Not replacement, it's just, it's repair. There's, this ditch is how long, four thousand feet? I have it somewhere in here.
Yeah, it's a little bit longer than that. It's right around.
That won't even cover, takes to mow.
Right now, we have price to do eight hundred feet of just maintaining the ditch.
That's on a different ditch.
It's on round. He gave me out, he's on board, but.
Same difference.
Same difference, eight hundred feet of dipping on that was forty-five thousand dollars. So, yeah, we can't even pay to do the repairs that need to be done to it.
So I'm assuming there's an assessment that'll go to the people that are involved in this ditch.
Right, there's.
Is everybody in, in this area, are they all using it, or is it?
So it's all assessed per acre, so. If you own a hundred acres that drain, so your watershed has to go to the ditch. So it's all divided acres, so there's four thousand some acres in there. So it's, that assessment's then divided up by acres and how many acres you own that drain into it, then gets assessed to your property type.
So are there any properties that do not drain in it?
Not that are assessed.
Okay.
So you, you have to drain into the ditch to be assessed.
And except for this year, there was, based on the resolution we did, there was a hundred and twenty-two parcels currently that were being assessed. And I think Rob and his team were looking at whether there are other people that should have been assessed.
And some that were being assessed that shouldn't have, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it goes both ways. Actually, we had about a dozen, we had about a dozen parcels that were either had been paying in and probably shouldn't now, or had not been paying in and should be paying in. And part of the reason, I mean, it's easy for stuff to slip through the cracks on that. I mean, because you've got splits over time, and if, you know, the assessment doesn't get added to a split or something like that, then you've got, you know, maybe somebody that now has a three, four, five acre residential site that's not paying in just because it didn't get added to the splits.
So what happens if I own five acres and I have four houses on them?
So the way, the way that the assessment was set up originally is it was based purely on acres. So the use, whether it's residential, commercial, or agriculture, agricultural, was not considered in the way the original assessment. It was just, just based on acres. If your water runs into it, then you benefit from that and you're included in the assessment. Now, parcels are fractionized too. So, you know, so if I have a hundred acres, but only ten acres runs into the water, is in the watershed for this, this project, then only those ten acres, I'm only paying the assessment for those ten acres.
And I think the thing we talked about Commissioners, when Rob and Cameron and I met on this, is obviously homeowners back in the seventies came to the Board of County Commissioners and asked for a petition ditch, and that's what starts the process. They, the homeowners had to ask for that. And so when the Commissioners created that, or allowed the, did the process to have that ditch, it wasn't to have the county bear any cost associated with that, it's to have assessments to maintain that ditch. So it's, the county is just taking on the liability of maintaining the ditch on behalf of the homeowners because they were asked. So the issue we're, we have now is if something needed done, like Clint mentioned, twenty-five thousand, who would pay for it? So the, the plan was never to throw that on the cost of the general fund to pay for that. But yet, we're in a sense bearing some liability in it because back in nineteen seventy, the Board of Commissioners agreed to take on this petition ditch, and therefore we are to maintain it, and now there's no money to properly maintain it. And that's kind of the cycle we're in. And I think we have, is there four ditches, Rob, or five?
We've got four projects, we've got two of them are just ditches, Ralphie's Ditch and North Branch of Ford Creek are just ditches. We've got one that is a combined project that has a ditch and a subsurface drainage pipe that's part of the project. And then we have one that is all rural residential, and it is the stormwater ponds for that residential, rural residential subdivision.
And Ralphie's Ditch is the next one that we're going to have to address when the timeframe allows us to address because we're in absolutely the same boat. I think Ralphie's Ditch, the cap's thirty-six hundred dollars, I think, Penny. So we, that one's another one. This year, we couldn't assess anything in Ralphie's Ditch because we're at the cap, but we don't have enough money in there to do anything that we need to do.
Yeah, we just had a tile outlet repaired down there, and I think the estimate on that was seventeen hundred dollars or something like that. So, you know, we'll eat up over half of our cap, I mean, just.
Do you find the new cap being, being adequate enough to maintain this, this ditch?
It's not, it's not what we find adequate, it's what you're.
So we have to do it based on the estimate, and we have to do twenty percent of that. So it's not whether or not that's adequate, it's, that's the limit that we're allowed to set.
Un arbitrary.
And I think, yeah, Rob might have hit on it before I came in, but every six years is, all the code allows us to look at these. And so I think between our office, Rob's office, Cameron's office, we, we need to make sure that these are put on our radar, and from here on out, every six years, these are, we looked at because obviously years and years have gone by, and that's how we're in this, in this predicament that we're in.
And the six years has to do with the volume of money that we can put into.
Cap, it sets the cap.
No, no, the six years is the time limit. You're, you're not allowed to reassess that, raise that cap any sooner than every six years.
Yeah, that's just the cut, yes. But we can raise the money every year that's, that's being assessed to those properties.
Annually, you guys said what gets assessed.
We do those in May. Each year, we set the assessments. Now, typically, I consult Rob and we look at, you know, do we have work that needs done? But the last few years, it's just been either we can't do it, or we can't because we're at, we're at the cap. Whether we need to do work or not, we, we, we don't because we're at the cap. So.
So we have five ditches total?
There's four more. So the, I think, so this process now is for you to allow us to public, or to publish a hearing of this, and have a public hearing on this. Thirty, at least thirty-one days from the date that Penny sends out the letters. And that hearing is really to assess whether we should raise the cap. So that's not about the individual assessments, that won't come until May. However, I did ask Rob and Cameron and Clint to, as part of that hearing process, give us some recommendation on what that, what that new assessment should be. So when we get to May of next year, we already have some guideline of where we should be. I think we've talked a little bit about if the cap is allowed to be twenty percent of the cost, so we're talking up to fifty-seven thousand. Cameron's thought was, then we should probably bring in approximately twenty percent of the cap each year. So that means that you're probably looking at around ten thousand dollars a year you're bringing in through assessments versus bringing in about forty-six hundred right now. So, you know, I think just using that twenty percent rule. So we know we need at least six thousand a year just to do preventative maintenance, like just before we would repair it.
So the assessment that we would do, are you saying you would reassess it every year at that point?
You, you can. Typically, once we set it per acre, you just, we just historically left it every year, but yes, you could change it each year.
So each year, the cost of owning some of that property there would increase a little bit if you changed it.
If you changed it every year. And then the code says, as soon as you would hit the cap, whatever you set the new cap out, then the code, we, you stop assessing, which is what we're at this year on Ralphie's Ditch. You have to just stop assessing until you go below that threshold, and then you can reassess again.
When was the last time the cap was raised?
Nineteen ninety-eight, I believe.
And we haven't had a need for doing a lot of maintenance on.
It's just mowing, spraying, and the cost of everything, like you guys.
That's twenty-seven years ago.
Yeah, Ford Creek does have, I mean, it needs some attention. It, as ditches go, it's still in, in reasonably good shape. There, you know, and everybody really has recognized this, is that it seems like the intensity of storm events has changed over time. So, you know, we've got that to deal with, where we've got a little bit more flashy flows. And we're also starting to see a little bit, you know, since nineteen seventy, something, there's been a lot more residential development in the watershed too. So all of those things increase flow through the ditch and the likelihood that you'll see some bank erosion here and there, and we do have some spots where we need to address that. And that's, that is probably the most expensive thing that we do on any of the ditch projects, is when we've got to go in and do rock reinforcement, you know, for erosion control on, on the banks.
So have we done an estimate as to how much you, dollar amount that will cost the homeowner, the ballpark?
We haven't, because I think we're part of the, once we set the hearing, then Rob's group will determine also how many parcels are there that should be in, in the watershed, right? And then that will determine what the cost for me. So we would talk about that at the hearing.
The, the net number of acres, I don't think the net number of acres that are assessed is really going to change. But like I say, we've got about a dozen or so properties that, you know, are going to go one way or the other as far as being in or not being in.
There'll be approximately, I think, what, Penny, a hundred and forty-eight ladders you're going to send out? That, so that's, that doesn't mean there's a hundred and seventy, a hundred and forty-eight property owners. That, that's parcels, a hundred and forty-eight parcels. So some of those are in multiple parcels and those kinds of thing.
So our function then today would be to, to do that resolution, to say that we're saying, meeting.
It is, and our proposal was to hold this hearing on December sixteenth, that's six P M in the Knox County Memorial Theater, because we just don't know about a hundred and forty-eight, how many individual, individual people those are. So just not knowing, we thought we'd have that theater at six P M on the December sixteenth.
Okay, the theater, I assume, check with them.
And then that would still allow you time to hit up, hit a deadline of before the end of the calendar year to, to, to have the meeting and reset the, reset the cap. That has to be done by the end of the year.
Anything else we need to know?
I guess the, the, the big thing right now is that the, the public hearing process that we're going to go through here in December is not, I mean, we're not talking about the actual assessments at that point. We're really talking about, and, and we don't call it, it's, the, the technically correct term is the permanent assessment base. We call it the maintenance fund. I mean, that's, you know, internally, we look at it as the maintenance fund. So we're really just looking at increasing the cap that we can, of funds, money that we can keep in, in the maintenance fund.
Which is needed to maintain the ditches, or else there's safety issues.
But the longer you wait, like most of this stuff, the more expensive it's going to get.
Is Ralphie's, is that next year we'll be able to look at?
I think next year.
Yeah, and those are the two, really, the ones that we.
And I had one of the landowners on Ralphie's Ditch giving me the devil yesterday about, you know, we don't mow it off enough or spray it off enough, or dip, or clean it up, and it's like.
Well, that's true.
You know, we can't do anything for three thousand dollars. I mean, I just had a twelve inch tile outlet repaired and it cost us seventeen hundred dollars. And I had three thousand dollars to start with, give or take it. You know, we just don't have the money to do those things. And they, you know, the, and this is one of the hard things that, it's a hard thing for a layperson who doesn't work with it to understand. A lot of say, well, that's the county ditch. It's the county's responsibility, they should just do it. The county is the custodian of the ditch, really. And the process for maintaining the ditch is actually part of state law. And you all have to work within the limits of the state law. Hence, if we haven't had a hearing to increase the permanent assessment base or the maintenance cap, then we're stuck with twenty percent of whatever the last estimate was used as.
So, and I think it, it's good to get these in order because as Rob's mentioned, I mean, as future development happens in the county, that there could be developers or homeowners that come to you and ask you to do petition ditches and probably likely will ask you to do more petition, dishing, ditches. So we just want to make sure we're monitoring them and, and doing them correctly.
Yeah, it's a great program, really, and, and, you know, in places like Hillier and Milford Township, especially in Knox County, it's really underutilized. I mean, we've got a lot of places down there where groups of landowners have kind of combined drainage issues that could be addressed through this program. But a lot, a lot of folks will think, well, it's going to be a county ditch, then the county pays for it. But yes, the county does pay for it upfront. But then the cost of that construction of that drainage improvement is assessed back onto the taxes, and that's where they, that's where they say, oh, well, we're not interested, you know. But, but it allows, it does allow you to pool the resources of multiple property owners to address a common drainage concern, and it's a great program.
Yeah, and that's a flat area. You know, the water doesn't, you know, like if you're in Bladensburg or Brinkhaven, you got hills for that natural run, water run.
And we've had, it, this has been probably five years ago, so we had one of the ditches, I don't know if it was Ford Creek or Ralphie's. We had, we did have something that had to be done. And so there wasn't any money. The general fund, obviously, we, you can fund other things. So we had to do what's called an advance, and we advanced them, you know, three thousand dollars or whatever to get the repairs done. But an advance has to be paid back within twelve months. So soon as we collected the next year's assessments, it was used to pay back, and now there's no money in the fund again. And so you just.
And that's not, that's not the Commissioner or the general fund being greedy about getting the money back. That's just statute, that's just what you have to do.
Yes, well, and it's trying to watch our, our pennies and make it efficient for the, you know, property owners.
Well, and we've been fortunate for a long time, you know. We didn't see a lot of cost increases in maintenance for the projects. But like everything else, these last ten years or so, stuff has just, you know, gone up so fast.
I imagine just the chemicals you spray with are ridiculous compared to years ago.
And I think, did you talk to them, just so the public knows, you're, you're not going in there and spraying Roundup to kill every weed there is. You're going in there and getting certain things.
Yeah, you have to use, you have to use herbicides that have an aquatic use label on them. So EPA says it's okay to use these products in an aquatic, aquatic environment, whether that's a pond or a stream or whatever it might be. And then, and then we're targeting too. We want broadleaf vegetation and woody vegetation is really what we want to keep down. Grasses, we're not too worried about. Grasses are fine, actually. Cattails, we don't like too well in the ditches because they tend to, you know, collect excess sediment in the bottom of the ditch and causes staff to clean those areas out quicker than what we'd like.
And Rob, you mentioned, what, what's the statute? The Commissioners are actually supposed to go physically see these?
Yeah, actually, technically, you're supposed to go inspect them once a year, and I don't know how they do that in someplace like Augles County where they've got four hundred miles of ditches, you know. I can't, I just can't imagine.
Now, they, they have their own drone, they fly, and they come in and show Commissioners.
And that might be good to do on some of ours to show those ditches.
You go, Andrew.
And that might be good for the hearing.
To have that, if it gets, at the time of the hearing, that.
Actually, yeah, we had access to somebody that could videotape it for us.
He's the guy, he's got the drone.
Why don't you say that and you looked at it?
And I was thinking it might be good to get with Rob and do all those so you could, committed to the Commissioners and the public, all of those.
Ralphie's and Ford Creek, that won't be much of a problem. The other two pro, the other two projects, we probably ought to notify the land. Is there residential areas in that, like, race of eyebrows?
Any other questions? Thank you, Clint, Rob.
So before they go, Commissioners, the first item we would have is if you would like to go in and approve the advertisement for public notice for a public meeting to discuss and review the permanent assessment base of the North Branch of Ford Creek.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those favorites say aye. What was the date for that, Jason?
That's going to be on December, Tuesday, December sixteenth, at six P M at the Memorial Theater.
So that has been approved.
Very thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Before I leave, we talked yesterday about possibly doing a little field trip today. Are we going to do that?
Yeah, we could do that. Does it think it's drying up to drive out there?
Oh, yeah, we don't have to go very far.
If it is just to come up to your office, or?
Yeah, what time do you think it'll be there?
We're not, we, we don't have much today, so we could come out after that.
Okay.
Eleven or before that.
That'd be fine. All right, see you then.
That letter of the changes. Do you want a copy?
Okay, next we have a pre-advertisement of public notice for bids for the Knox County Engineer Pavement Marketing for two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Those favorites say aye.
Then we have a pre-authorized certifications for the OPW seed dispersments of Vermishy Road resurfacing.
Motion to approve.
Second. And also, some favorites say aye.
And we have a utility permit for Mercury Broadband on Butler Road and Pike Township.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Those favorites say aye. Looks like Pike ought to have some internet here before you do that. Finally, right?
And then we have utility permit, Mercury Broadband, Butler Road, Pike Township.
Those favorites say aye.
And another one for Mercury Broadband on Saps Run Road, Brown Township.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Those figures stand.
Mercury Broadband, Peelerville Road, Brown Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favorites say aye.
And Mercury Broadband, Saps Run Road, Brown Township.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Those favorites say aye.
And the last one is Knox Energy Co-op on Apple Valley Drive, Howard Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favorites say aye.
And next time we have Commissioners, I've only got everything worked out with that lease for the Apple Valley's Property Owners Associations for the property out there in Brown Township. This is the area that they've kind of leased for us for years, it's near, near our shale mine that Cameron uses. We did do some work on this, they're kind of more defined the space that they're leasing from us. That was the old lease, kind of just referenced the whole forty-two acre parcel. So I worked with the map office, we've more clearly defined that it's actually a six acre area that they lease. We have attached this as Exhibit A to the lease to let them know this is the specific area that they're leasing. And it's ready for you to sign, and we'll get it to Property Owners Association. I know Barry's already had a meeting with them, and they're good with these changes, so.
So do we put in there what they can store on that, that property, Jason?
Yeah, we put in there, yeah, permitted uses. Yeah, leasing shall comply with all lawful requirements, rules, regulations, and government authority. So that covered like all the EPAs, because there is a creek near there, compliance with laws. So we're, we're good, we've kind of defined all that, pegged all that up, and so we're good.
That was perfect. Did we, did we vote on it?
No.
Okay, taking motion? Motion, second. All those favorites say aye.
And then we have approved the Federal Transit Administration program, this is for Bethany, this is for her, that she's required in order to get her funding and her grants. So this is ready, I think, this, yeah, we do need to sign it on her behalf, yeah, for her, and then she's good to go.
Can we still need a motion?
Yes, yes.
Take a motion to approve.
Second it.
Those favorites say aye.
Then it looks like Clint had an ad for the agenda items while he was here. He requested to do a public announcement for, for professional design services. And this is relating to the grid replacement project. And firms interested in being considered for the contract, they would need to require their statement of qualifications no later than December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So this is just bringing you to let Penny do the notice.
We need motion?
Yes.
Second. All those favorites say aye.
Yeah, there's nothing on that this one. I think that's all I have for you.
Okay, you're going to give us an update for the back?
Yeah, we're still good. We'll open up the building Monday, seven A M, it'll be open. All we're waiting on is that swipe reader, but that doesn't impact the public use of the building. That'll get put in next week sometime, but state inspections happened yesterday, we're good to go. We just needed to pay a permit fee to get the occupancy permit. Rob and took care of that this morning. So we, we're ready to, we're ready to open it up. Dave's cleaning the floor back there, and I think we're ready to, ready to go.
So the handicap parking spots back there, they will be open on Monday?
They'll be open on Monday, yeah, and they're already working today and tomorrow to get all the signage and everything down on the side of the building here, then we'll work with the post office, get the, the mailbox moved back to its proper space and all of that, but, yeah, fully operational on Monday.
And then we've had, I've had some people ask when the sidewalks are going to be changed on High Street and Chestnut, and we don't have any updates about the city.
No, it was bid by the city, but I haven't heard anything else other than we got our cost. But I haven't seen anything on like a pre-con. Um, but I haven't seen anything on like a pre-construction meeting. Not sure that was really going to happen this year. Because it's part of this Chestnut Street asphalt paving project and that's not going to happen until next year.
And we're still waiting for our architect on our next kind of changeability to get back with us on.
Yeah, that's supposed to go off the bed between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
And the city, I think it's still having someone work on diner between Habitat and their Knox County change.
Nothing's happening yet down there.
Because frustrating for us because we want to get.
Right.
Move it back on that. Um, and Commissioner Lester, you went to the bare bare board last night.
Uh, yeah, I uh informed them that I had talked to Sam Philkins. And uh, the grip, Sam can get the money in. Around fifteen thousand was the estimate from. Ellis Brothers to demolish the old house. Uh, they are gonna notify the appropriate building companies to get uh the utilities shut off. Uh, and then they will email me or call me and tell me that they've got that done and then we can get with uh. Ellis Brothers and continue the demolition at that point.
Yeah, and that's been a five-year process. I hate to get that asked. Uh, we did receive a letter from Superintendent Bill Cedar from the Mount Vernon City Schools and. Um, he just wanted to make sure that uh, um, we were um aware that. With all the piecemeal things going on with the the state government and property tax, that. He just wants to throw up a red flag that uh, all those piecemeal things um be taken together in a thoughtful way that. These schools aren't totally slammed. Uh, since their name is usually the one that's out there, I will send that letter on to uh. Um, Brenner and Heiner and Lear and let them to be aware of that that concern is. Uh, as many people know, we did pass the exemption, homestead exemption. For those that are already in that area and there would be a reduction there. Um, but we're trying to get a handle on on a lot of things at the same time. I will pass that on. I, Cheryl, if you want to copy that letter, I can get that to you. And do you have anything?
I do not.
Uh, take a motion to adjourn voting is over. So I don't tell you to go vote anymore. Is that, that's that's a good thing. And then uh, I'll take a. Second. Will you stand in charge? Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.